I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of council for Monday, February 25th at 7:00 PM. Call to order. And I would also like to acknowledge that we are meeting on the shared traditional lands of the Coast Salish people. I am looking for a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Moved by councillor Logan, seconded by councillor Kobiyashi. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Thank you. Public participation. I would like to invite anyone present to take this opportunity to address council, to present concerns or ask couns— or, excuse me, ask questions of council. Comments pertaining to a matter that has been the subject of a public hearing are prohibited where the bylaws related to the matter have not been presented to council for consideration of adoption. There is a maximum of 20 minutes allocated for public participations. Topics should be addressed briefly to allow other speakers an opportunity to address council. Saying that, is there anyone from the pub— coming up? And then if you could just say your name and address for the record, that'd be great as well.
Carol Brown, 796 Cuauta Crescent, C-U-A-U-L-T-A. Thirty-nine-year resident of Callwood. And I'm just here this evening for this public participation part, just to applaud council on the fact that they're bringing forward bylaw 1757, the checkout bag regulation bylaw. I believe it's going to be doing its first reading tonight. Is that correct? I think that this doesn't really need very much discussion because I think it's a wonderful idea and following along with Victoria and Sanage. I did take around a petition to my neighborhood in the fall on this topic, and I just want to say to council that it wasn't a huge petition with lots and lots of signatures because I just didn't have time, but every door that I knocked on, every single door, was a positive response. And they signed the petition. I brought it down to Callwood, and I'm just so pleased that you're going ahead with this and I hope it makes it through. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Graham Hames. I'm from Four Mile Liquor Store at 310 Goldstream Avenue. My counterpart from Cascadia Liquor Store, Keith Barban, couldn't be here tonight, but I'll be addressing to discuss liquor or alcohol on grocery store shelves. So I'll start off with a little bit of background. The provincial government has enacted a one-kilometer distance criteria for any sort of alcohol retail in the province, so between a private liquor store or a public liquor store. So BC Liquor Store or private liquor store, they both need to be one kilometer apart. And the reason for this is just to sustain healthy, sustainable business with, you know, a distance that they deemed to support the businesses. So currently, there is no distance criteria for alcohol on grocery store shelves. So technically, if there's a grocery store right next to a liquor store, they could put products on their shelves, and there's no current bylaw in place to prohibit that. So what we've been doing, we both have liquor stores in each of those municipalities. We've been working with the municipalities on that. The municipality of View Royal has put in a 350-meter distance criteria between alcohol retail stores. The city of Langford has put in an 800-meter distance criteria between stores. There's also been a number of other municipalities that have put in their own regulation or bylaw at municipal level. Kamloops, North Vancouver, city of Richmond, Port Alberni, Vernon, Cam— city of Victoria, and the city of Vancouver, actually. And there's a number of others. So one of the points we wanted to make is that there's a number of established retailers that have been here for a long time, serving the residents in the municipality. We're coming here just with— basically from the premise of supporting the small businesses. We just want to sort of have some assurances that, you know, the investments we've made, the commitments we've made are going to be protected because we see this as like a significant— it could have a very significant impact on our business as retailers. We do feel there's subemergency to it because, as I said, there's no distance criteria set up at this level right now. So, you know, we certainly feel it as retailers and just wanted to bring it to the attention. So basically, I'm here to kind of bring it forward, answer questions, and really, we wanted to present that, you know, from our point of view as a small business owners and retailers who have made, you know, we think significant investments and trying to establish businesses and grow them and continue to grow them here in Callwood. You know, we would certainly like to have that kind of looked at so we could have some peace of mind for those investments and the continued growth forward.
Great, thank you. So we actually have an agenda item of 7.2. So we're going to come back to this from a discussion standpoint, so—
Okay.
But thank you for presenting.
Sure.
Is there any other members of public who would like to comment before I move on? Last chance. All right. Moving on then to mayor's message. Just a couple things to share. This Saturday, March 2nd, is the Westshore Lobster Fest 2019, which we are encouraging you all to attend if you can. This is a rotary event to support the Sarah Beckett Memorial Playground. So if— those who like lobsters, there you go. Also, Royal Bay Secondary Theatre presents Peter and the Starcatcher, which is happening March 6th through 9th, so next week. I've attended several of the Royal Bay secondary plays, and they're usually fantastic, and it'd be great to support our young people, so I would very much encourage all of those who can attend to attend. There's also going on the Callwood Calendar Photo Contest, which you can submit your photos and vote for your favorites. We'll be picking a winning photo to feature in each month of the upcoming 2020 calendar, so get your photos in for that. And did you know that you can safely recycle your old cell phones here at Callwood City Hall? So if you need to get rid of an old phone, you can drop it off here. So the recycle my cell box is— helps prevent putting those cell phones into landfields— or landfills. Thank you. And then I'd also like to congratulate councillor Kobiyashi. He was elected vice chair of—I think it's Policy? Is it Policy for— planning and policy for the Greater Victoria Public Library? So congratulations on that. And then, as you probably noticed, coming up this Wednesday is Pink Shirt Day to support those who have been bullied in the past, and so we are wearing these pink shirts this evening. These are Royal Bay Secondary School shirts, so feel free—I think you can buy them there as well, and they're incredibly reasonable. They're only $5 a shirt, so you could actually probably pick up some shirts here as well. So if you want to support the local high school and support anti-bullying, put on a pink shirt for Wednesday. I will look to councillor Day.
Thanks. I just want to share with everybody that I spent today at the Victoria Native Friendship Centre, working on the second advisory panel gathering for Victoria's Urban Reconciliation Dialogue. And I was very fortunate to receive this lovely card as a memento from attending. It was created by a local Indigenous artist, and it depicts a young Indigenous girl with her orange shirt on for Orange Shirt Day. It was a really excellent gathering with resource agencies from throughout—the CRD, Sanage, Victoria, Esquimalt, and really working towards ending racism, really basically moving forward with everyone having an equal voice around the table and trying to find ways to lift up our Indigenous partners. And I met a lot of wonderful people there, and there will be more events coming up that I will try to share with you.
Thank you. I'm just looking at the rest of council. Does anyone else have anything to share, publicly? Any public events or anything that you're aware of? All right then. Then we will move on to Adoption of Minutes. 5.1 Memorandum regarding the— from the Director of Corporate Services regarding releasing details of votes from in-camera. The January 22nd, 2019 Special Meeting of Council Minutes were scheduled for adoption at the January 28th, 2019 Meeting of Council. The Minutes were removed to provide staff an opportunity to obtain a legal opinion on releasing of the details of a vote when bringing an item out of in-camera. Legal counsel has confirmed, including the names of the mover, the seconder, and the disposition, and the votes against the motion in the Minutes are all required and/or permitted under the City of Callwood procedural bylaw and Roberts Rules of Order and at law. With that, can I get a motion to adopt the Minutes of the Special Meeting of Council held January 22nd, 2019? Thank you. Moved by councillor Jensen, seconded by councillor Kobiyashi. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carried. 5.2 Regular Council Meeting Minutes of— oh my goodness, there's— sorry, forgive me. Can I do 5.2 through 5.7? Did we agree that I could do all those together?
Two, three, and four.
Two, three, and four, thank you. So for— unless there is somebody who would like to not do it, I would like to actually combine 5.2, 5.3, and 5.4 for adoption.
I'll move all three, your worship.
Thank you. Seconded. Moved by councillor Logan, seconded by councillor Jensen. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Thank you. And then we can also— 5.5 through 5.7, I just need a motion to receive. Moved by councillor Kobiyashi, seconded by councillor Day. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Thank you. 6.1 Mike Riley from the President of the Victoria— Westshore Chamber of Commerce. Sorry. I gave you— I gave you a new title.
Yeah, thanks very much, your worship. No, we are clearly the Westshore Chamber, not the Victoria Chamber. So thank you very much for the opportunity to come forward. It is my plan to be here at least on a quarterly basis to allow city council to be informed as to what we're doing at the Westshore Chamber. Following upon the many years of great leadership that councillor Kobiyashi provided as the president of the board, it's my hope that we're able to continue and integrate the activities that we do, not just with Langford and View Royal and Machozen and the Highlands, but also with Callwood. To that end, thank you very much for your attendance at the Holiday at Hatleys in December. That was probably the greatest attendance by Callwood City Council that we've seen at those events, and it goes a long way with the membership to recognize that Callwood is indeed open for business, and we do work hand in hand. The Westshore Chamber, our goal is to be the voice of business in the Westshore communities. It is my hope that, at least by the end of my presidency, the Chamber is seen as an equal voice for business. So when the media would like to know what's going on in the Westshore, that it's not just Mayor Young who's the first person they think of, because while he does represent Langford and does so well, that is only one community of the five. So the Chamber is the one unique organization that can bridge across all of the municipalities and speak with that mandate. We have a new strategic plan that we are implementing this year. Our goal is to exceed 400 members. We have adopted a balanced budget, which was actually put forward today, and I'm very pleased that despite economic circumstances, that we're continuing to be fiscally responsible in moving forward. One expenditure that we have decided to embark on is the adoption of a new customer relations CRM, which is really going to take us to the next level of being able to serve our members and be available in the community. From that point, I would really like to see that we take on a greater role of advocacy, and that's where I think that we can work well with Callwood and the other four municipalities. Specifically, we would like to be there as a partner with you as we move forward on two of the issues that are very relevant to our membership, and that is transportation and economic growth. I was very encouraged, having heard the city council, that those are two things that are first and foremost in your views, and I'm here to tell you that we at the Chamber support that and welcome the opportunity to partner with you as you move forward with that. One thing that we would like to be able to do more of is assisting when individuals apply for business licenses with Callwood, that the Chamber has an opportunity to also reach out to those individuals and say, "Thank you for moving forward and opening up a business, and we at the Chamber are here to help support you so that you're not just doing it alone." Most studies show that the likelihood that a business is going to be more successful than the first five years are when they have an opportunity for both mentorship and sponsorship within their community. The city of Langford does that now, lets us know when a new license has been applied for, and I'd like that to be something that we could investigate with Callwood. We've embarked on a more aggressive communication strategy, and one of those— one of the elements of that is regular appearances on CFAX, for example. So I'm on every three weeks. I know that councillor Jensen and I have spoken. If there are things that he would like me to be able to promote on behalf of the city of Callwood that is business-related, so please be aware that that is an avenue of communication that we do have open, and I only expect that it will grow. Then finally, we have two events that you should be aware of, that the Westshore Chamber is putting on for our members and the community. And the first is the Viva La Westshore, which is our annual casino night, which is going to be on May 3rd. We're bringing it back to Olympic View. And the charity that we're raising money for is the B.C. Vancouver Island Children's Health Network. And then the Best of the Westshore is our annual Business Awards Night, which is held in October, and that also looks like it's coming back to Callwood from Bear Mountain. So it's a great night. We actually have an open call now for amending some of the categories. So please take a look at our website. If there's some categories of businesses that you feel should— are either underrepresented, no longer fit, or should be represented, we'd be happy to take those suggestions. So thank you very much for the opportunity. I hope that this is valuable for you, and I look forward to coming back again in the second quarter.
Awesome. Thank you, Mike.
Any questions?
Great. Thank you very much. Thanks. We appreciate what the Chamber does for us, so thank you, Michael. Moving on, 7. 7.1, there's a letter from the District of the Highlands regarding a regional vegetation management strategy. The District of Highlands has sent a letter to all member local governments requesting an indication of their interest in participating in a co-application submitted by the CRDE on behalf of its members to UBCM, Community Resilience Investment Program 2020 intake, for the development of a regional vegetation management strategy to assess forest die-off, recommend alternate fire-resistant vegetation replacements, initiate a pilot project to use the results to create a regional strategy, model policy, and implementation plan. Does council have any questions for staff? If not, council can receive the correspondence or direct staff to prepare a letter indicating interest in participating in a co-application to be submitted by the CRD to UBCM's Community Resilience Investment Program 2020 intake. Yes, councillor Kobiyashi?
Quick question to the mayor or staff. What's the resource impact of following through with this strategy, just so we have a general idea?
Through the chair to councillor Kobiyashi. It'll probably require the initial letter. Will take about five minutes, but the issue then becomes the work that needed to be done in the background, which might be quite considerable. I'd also like to bring council's attention that when these sort of programs start, the CRD initiative, it quite often morphs into an actual program that Callwood will have to pay for. And Callwood, at the current time, has a lot of these programs that do cost us a lot of money, so it's one of those things to look at the benefit versus the costs of commencing down this road. But it doesn't stop us from making this application at this point in time.
Councillor Day?
Thank you. I think when we consider the costs, we need to also consider the costs of not doing it because one of the things that we grappled with when we were looking at our tree bylaw was really in being able to find the appropriate species that would survive well. And I've seen certainly a number of landscaping plans where the species haven't survived well, and this is particularly informed by the fire smart policies throughout the province. So something to consider is that it may provide more information to us on what will work well with the changes that unavoidably are coming for us. So I, for one, would be very interested in seeing what species are recommended in our area in the light of climate change reality.
Before I go to councillor Baxter, we have two choices here. We can either receive the correspondence, or we can receive the correspondence and direct to prepare a letter indicating interest in participating in a co-application. I would prefer to try—and this is my fault, so I'm not blaming anybody but myself—but I would prefer that we have the motion and then start discussions. And I've realized I've done it a couple times now where I've started discussions without having a motion. So may I have a motion first, and then we'll continue on with councillor Baxter in the discussion?
I have a motion.
Do you have the motion?
Yes.
Then go ahead.
I'd like to move that we direct staff to reply indicating that the city of Callwood is interested in the proposal, but reserves any commitment until we have seen a budget and a detailed work plan and detailed results intended to be achieved by that work plan.
You got that as a motion?
I don't have it written out, but I can probably write that out again for you.
We'll— you may have to say it again before we call the vote. All right, so I have a mover. Do I have a seconder to that motion? Seconded by councillor Jensen. Discussion. I'll let councillor Baxter, you may go first.
Thank you. Over the last 10 years at least, I have, in talking to people qualified in tree care in various ways, repeatedly heard a concern about trees indicating distress and talk of a multi-year drought, but I've never seen any definitive information on this. And I think with enough people concerned about it, I think it would be worth having a study done to see if there is anything real in this, and if there is, how serious is it and what can we do about it, particularly as I would hope that the $100,000 grant would cover the entire cost or vast majority of it. But that's one of the things I don't believe is actually dealt with in this letter. So hence the reason to move that we indicate we're interested, subject to a detailed budget, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Jensen, did you have any comments? You were just seconding. Okay. Is there any other comments? Then I will call the question— oh, I'm sorry, councillor Day.
Sorry. I was just going to point out that it's—the grant is up to $100,000 per municipality and that it does consider the long-term effects post-disaster. If we do have the tree die off, we could have significant issues around forest fire, certainly an issue with some of our old growth forests and rural roads and other areas.
I am going to call the question. All those in favor, opposed, carried. 7.2 Memorandum from the Senior Planner and Letter from Four Mile Pub and Cascadia Liquor Stores Regarding the Retail Liquor Policy Changes and Impact on Small Businesses. Collaborating together Cascadia, Callwood Liquor Store, and Four Mile Liquor Store has sent a letter regarding a retail liquor policy change and the impact on small business. Provincial regulations require private and government liquor stores to be separated by a minimum of 1,000 meters or 1 kilometer. They have raised concerns that alcohol sales in grocery stores are exempt from this 1-kilometer provincial distance requirement. They are requesting that council review current zoning bylaws and definitions. Staff have indicated if council wishes to review the current zoning bylaws regarding liquor outlets, a minimum of 35 hours of staff time would be required. In discussions as well, though, with our CAO, our CAO saw real value in doing a review of the current zoning because they would want to encompass not only retail versus grocery store, but also cannabis and the relationship of all those zonings, and that it's a very timely time to be doing that. So with that, however, does council have any questions for staff? Councillor Day?
Thank you. Just one question, which is basically related to our area of influence, because it is really provincial legislation that has set the distance between liquor stores in the past, and it's really this change towards now allowing the sale of liquor in grocery stores that has impacted that. I'm just wondering, is this something that we really want to delve into, or is it—would it really be more appropriate to identify the problem to the province, given that they're the one who've set the limitations?
Through your worship, the—I spoke with the province today regarding the 1-kilometer distance requirement, and that is from liquor retail store to liquor retail store, and they advise that there's a current moratorium to be reviewed in 2021 related to new liquor retail store licenses. In association with that, they clarified that liquor sold in grocery stores falls into two categories. One, that would be a liquor retail store, similar to what you see out there now, beer, wine, spirits. And the other is related to wine sales in grocery stores, and there is a list of parameters and requirements that they fall under. For instance, they must be local, et cetera, B.C. wines. So that was the comment back from them today regarding those two issues.
Councillor Jensen, and then Baxter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In response to councillor Day, liquor most definitely is something that's regulated entirely provincially, and I can tell you that the current trend is to—is trending towards the relaxation of these laws. We don't have any control over the actual—the—I mean, we don't have any control over the actual provincial statutes, because that's a senior level of government, but my understanding of reading this is that we do have influence in the planning and land use portion of this, is my read. And I do believe that there is room for us to certainly review this with a view to the fact that we have many small businesses that might be impacted by this in our community, especially—I mean, I empathize with the Four Mile store where you have Thrifties right next door, and if—I can see the day coming where there's a whole aisle of liquor in a grocery store, just like there is in the United States. So we may want to review this as far as a planning and land use spin to this.
Thank you. Councillor Baxter?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, if the province had always allowed this, that is grocery stores to carry liquor and carry it very close to a liquor store, I wouldn't care one way or the other. But the fact that liquor sales have been so tightly controlled and that—I'm sure that anybody who holds a retail liquor license spends a lot of money getting it, because obviously it was—you know, the province created a situation where there were a license to print money, and now it's going to have to be—you know, a local businessman is going to have to be in competition with, I believe it's Sobies or Loblaw's that actually owns Thrifties. in competition with, I believe it's Sobies or Loblaw's that actually owns Thrifties. I don't think it's fair. And I think one way to, for us to make it a bit fairer is to impose a distance. So I fully support a review of the bylaw, particularly as these other issues are at stake, cannabis, et cetera.
Counselor Kobayashi? Sure, do you have one?
I'd like to make the motion that staff be directed to review current land use bylaws and definitions regarding retail liquor outlets and cannabis.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Counselor Kobayashi, seconded by Counselor Logan. Any other discussion? And look, I did the motion at the end again. I'll eventually get around to doing it the right way. Counselor Day?
Thank you. Just wanted to add one small note to the discussion so that staff know about it when they're writing the report. And that is the issue of people who choose to avoid alcohol. And today at the Indigenous Reconciliation Panel, one of our Indigenous partners shared that she had been 25 years sober. And that is a consideration for people who are in liquor stores, that they would maybe prefer to put themselves in places where that isn't everywhere they go.
Thank you. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Moving on to new business, 8.1. Director of Long Range Planning and Sustainability. Opportunity to be a partner in the Simon Fraser University Integrated Climate Action in B.C. Communities Project. The city of Callwood has been invited to take part in a project managed by the Simon Fraser University Adaptation to Climate Change Team Act. The project is integrating climate action in B.C. communities and aims to assist local governments in efficiently and effectively integrating climate adaptation and emission mitigation activities. Good Lord. If council chooses to take part in this project, a draft letter of intent has been included for consideration. And let's try it this way. So there is a recommendation for consideration that the mayor be authorized to sign the draft letter of intent to join the Integrated Climate Action in B.C. Communities Project on the city of Callwood's behalf and direct staff to provide it to the Simon Fraser University Adaptation Climate Change Team. May I have that motion for discussion?
I'll move that.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Jensen, seconded by Counselor Day. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. 8.2. Demographic Study and Land Yield Analysis. Colliers International Consulting was engaged to undertake a demographic study and land yield analysis to better understand Callwood's future growth. Staff have provided a report that provides highlights of the study. There is a recommendation that council receive the demographic study and land yield analysis report attached as appendix one to the staff report entitled "Demographic Study and Land Yield Analysis," dated February 11, 2018. May I have that motion for discussion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Day, seconded by Counselor Logan. I'm going to go with all the, I'm just going to try and go with movers if they, do you have a discussion? Do you want to discuss it as a mover?
Yes, please.
Okay, go ahead. And then Counselor Logan?
Thank you. One of the interesting things in reading the report was that our growth over the past 10 years is going, will be different from our growth over the next 10 years, that we are seeing a significant increase of maybe 35% in the next 10 years. So some of the things that they looked at with regards to facilitating retail supply within Royal Bay and the Seaside and La Torre neighborhoods, I think are quite important. But there still is an awful lot of variation. And I guess my question is around where they've applied their ideal of what they can assume our growth will be. There's quite a few areas that don't forecast a lot of growth, and I'm just wondering about the reliability of those statistics.
All right, thank you. I'll look to staff.
Through your worship, so Colliers relied on data provided by us, Stats Canada, the Conference Board of Canada, and Pinpoint. And they also have a proprietary method that they use to determine these numbers. One of the limitations of any type of demographic analysis is that the closer your projection, the more accurate it's likely to be. So the 10-year projection is anticipated to be more accurate than the 20-year projection. In order to allow for quick as well as budget-friendly future projections, staff did request that we dialed the data down to the discrete neighborhood level so that if one area was to be looked at in a few years alone, we already had a baseline established for that. So that was to help mitigate some of those concerns moving forward.
Counselor Logan?
Thank you, worship. Through you to...
I forgot to acknowledge your hair, by the way. It looks gorgeous tonight.
You know, it highlights my eyes.
It sure does.
Like it. I forgot my pick, though. Through you to staff, thank you. Would the information here go to influence some of the transportation planning or even the location of certain services, like recreational services or liquor stores or pubs in the Royal Bay neighborhood? I'm just throwing out some positive vibes, you know, so we can make sure that we locate services in the most appropriate place based on the demographics that are contained.
So through your worship, one of the outcomes of findings from Colliers related to commercial was to locate some of the commercial areas into the newer developing areas of Royal Bay, Seaside, and La Torre. So yes, effectively, this did and will continue to inform other projects and documents that the city works towards.
And just to follow up and the point of clarification, so that's the retail part of things, but in terms of recreation as an example and maybe other services that would play to a specific demographic that might be located at Royal Bay as an example?
This was limited to commercial and to industrial as well as the population projection. But again, we did dial it down to the discrete neighborhood level, so that could be a future consideration.
Counselor Kobayashi?
Yes, through the chair. Just a quick question. I sort of read here what you do with the data, what we do with the data. It's unfortunate that we didn't do this entire survey, you know, this study for the whole West Shore because it doesn't help you build up the business case for getting added services out here right now. Unfortunately, it's Callwood-centric. Do you know if the other municipalities have done something similar? So, and if you have, can you get that data? Because it helps us build business cases on our economic development side right now.
So through the chair, I know in 2014, Urban Futures undertook a study and that helped to inform some of the numbers in this, sorry, to help formulate some of the Colliers numbers. And that was a West Shore-wide one. So part of the reason why this was undertaken is it was noted in the official community plan that there was a discrepancy between our population projections and the regional growth studies' population projections. So this was to investigate that and to come up with a more definitive answer for us as a city.
Yep.
Just the urban, the urban future study, is it possible to get that report to council?
Yes, I can ensure that's circulated.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Nobody opposed? Carried. 8.3. From the Fire Chief, Renewal of the Mutual Aid Agreement. Excuse me. Staff are looking for direction on the possible renewal of an expired fire department mutual aid agreement for the provision of fire suppression and rescue services between the city of Callwood and the district of Machosen. The recommended motion is that the fire chief be directed to pursue implementation of the updated mutual aid agreement with the district of Machosen that does not have a fee for service provision for a five-year term.
I'll move recommendation.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Jensen, seconded by Counselor Baxter. Discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thanks, chief. Manager, yeah, quick, get in there, Paul, hurry. Manager of Building Inspections and Bylaw Services, Proposed Checkout Bag Regulation Bylaw. At the regular meeting of council held November 14, 2017, council directed staff to adapt the CRD draft model bylaw for a single-use plastic bag ban in Callwood and bring it forward for consideration. A draft bylaw has been prepared for council's consideration. If council chooses to move forward with the draft bylaw, I would like to suggest that we give it first and second reading only tonight. The reason is that staff have indicated that they will engage with stakeholders and residents to obtain input, and this would allow us to incorporate that input if needed during a third reading as amended. The municipal ticketing information bylaw is also presented as a companion bylaw, and I would suggest that it also be given first and second reading only as well. And that the recommendation that's there, that I'm looking for a recommendation, is that the manager of Building Inspections and Bylaw Services report regarding proposed checkout bag regulations bylaw just be received. May I have that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Day, seconded by Counselor Logan. Discussion. Day, then Logan, and then Kobayashi.
Thanks. Just wanted to say that I think that it's very important for our community to be pretty much the same as everywhere else. Everyone is moving away from plastic bags and towards reusable bags that have longevity and help to eliminate another source of materials in our landfill. So as we heard earlier tonight, that many of our community have supported this in the past, and I think that it only makes sense for our region to operate similarly throughout.
Thank you. Counselor Logan?
Thank you, worship. I think we're pretty much already there for the most part. Superstore did it a number of years ago, followed by Thrifties. I do support the first and second reading initially today to have that conversation with the stakeholders, businesses specifically, in terms of how best to work with them to enact something like this so they're prepared and going in with eyes wide open. But this is probably not unexpected.
Counselor Kobayashi?
Yes, I agree. I also agree with supporting the first and second reading. But I guess the bee in my bonnet really is that here we go again, you know, we're tackling problems that are, like, you know, if you read the Great Canadian Shoreline Cleanup, the biggest problem is not plastic bags. It's in fact, plastic cups and paper cups, you know, the non-recyclable ones. That's the biggest problem up there. And, you know, we're legislating something that is so far like 28 on the list, and we're not tackling the big issues. So I just find this a little, it's not so hypocritical, but we're just not tackling what the bigger issues are right now. And that's why you find me, you know, maybe people say I'm anti-green, but I'm not because I don't have a plastic bag in my house. But, you know, the fact is that we're not tackling the big issues. So I just made that comment.
Great, thank you. Counselor Baxter?
I'd agree with Counselor Kobayashi that we're not tackling the big issues. And I look forward to bringing something to help tackle them forward to this council. But since this is in front of us and is part of the issue, and it may not be a big factor in the shoreline cleanup, but as Counselor Day said, an awful lot of this ends up in the landfill, and the landfill is filling up. And we really have no idea what we're going to do when that's full. And frankly, that scares me to death. And anything we can do, absolutely anything we can do to stop things going in the landfill, I'm in favor of until somebody tells me what we're going to do when it's full.
All right. Nobody else has any comments? I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. 8.5. Recommendation from the Committee of the Whole Regarding Development Variance Permit Regarding, or DVP 18009, 3310, Hockring, Road Subdivision Roadway Standards and Improvement Works.
Move the recommendation, worship?
Oh, no, you're not. Well, okay, yes, I guess you can. Yes, you may. Moved by, thank you. All right, discussion. I wanted to have a discussion, but somebody jumped ahead. But that's okay. Well, no, I appreciate that. Thank you. So in the recommendation, on page 141 of this agenda, the committee has removed, in Committee of the Whole, the committee has removed the requirement for the development to install a municipal irrigation system. I understand the reluctance to install irrigation system when we ask our residents to reduce water usage during drought periods. There is a perception out there to be considered. However, we are requiring that the developer to plant two boulevard trees that will require regular watering during the first three years until they are established. If the irrigation system is not installed, we will rely on municipal staff to manage that watering for that three-year period. This will move the responsibility for the health and potential replacement of those trees from the developer to the municipality. I would like to suggest that we adopt the recommendations on page 141 with an amendment to reinstate the requirements for a municipal irrigation system. I would also like to just note, the cost of the developer to install the irrigation system with a meter is approximately $5,000 that the developer will have to be required to take on. However, if we don't require that, the cost to hand water through the use of our public works is approximately $1,200 a year. So it'll basically cost municipal taxpayers about $3,600 to maintain those boulevard trees by removing the irrigation system. So I would suggest to this council that it makes much more, in a stronger financial sense, to allow the developer to put in that irrigation system and have him bear the cost of that versus having the general taxpayer. So I am, I, I'm allowed to make an amendment, am I not? So I am going to make an amendment that we include the irrigation system. And I'm looking for a seconder for discussion.
Second.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Baxter. Discussion? If there isn't any other, I'll call the vote on it. Oh, Counselor Kobayashi?
Okay, so another option is, why put the trees in?
Oh, yep, that is another option. Counselor Day?
Thank you. There's a lot of good reasons for putting the trees in, not the least of which is the trees help to hold the soil, they do address stability, and they also make it more attractive. We do want to build an attractive neighborhood. Having shade for your kids to walk under, play under in the summertime is quite important. So I think having the trees is important for the enjoyment. If you watch house shows and you, I'm a bit of an addict, but they're always talking about the neighborhoods with big, beautiful street trees having greater value. So I think there's a lot of value in having street trees.
Any other discussion before I call the question? Oh, sorry, Counselor Baxter and then Counselor Kobayashi and then possibly Logan. Baxter?
I just want to reinforce the thing about trees. And I'll briefly talk about a study that was done years ago where this team went all over North America showing people pictures of streets and asking them to choose the ones they like best. And all, everybody chose street scenes with trees, especially big trees that provide shade. And I think people just like trees like that. And you've got to plant them if you're going to get them eventually in that format.
Counselor Kobayashi?
I'm not anti-tree or anything here. Just want to make sure you're clear on that. You know, can we not plant a native tree that is like drought-proof or, you know, there's other options here. I just feel that, you know, again, it's maintenance costs later on. All the decisions we make today, it's like we plant a lot of things in boulevards right now and we can't maintain them. And we take a real bashing from our citizens, you know, and so there's a cost to this. It's just so that everyone understands... It's just, so that everyone understands. I mean, so I'm just looking at other options, and so that's why I'm just suggesting, is there, is there a tree such as a drought-proof one that's native, that we can plant? I don't know. It's just, that's what it seems like to me.
I'm going to go over, sorry councillor Logan, before I go back to councillor Baxter.
I was just going to say perhaps we can plant a flowering cherry tree, but they're quite attractive. But the other thing too is, you know, there's a couple of things I worry about. I worry about the actual cost of the irrigation system that may be used just to irrigate the trees. And so it's another cost that we put on to a homeowner that's trying to provide some infill housing. But also, as a gardener, like, there's other ways to help trees establish, and we've got those bags or whatever the heck they're called to surround the tree that can water them pretty well. And I would suspect that it's probably in the developer and homeowner's best interest to maintain them, to ensure that the property is well-kept, and it's very low-impact and it's quick, you know, and so I'm just trying to, you know, I agree with the sentiment that we need to make sure that we irrigate them. I'm just not convinced that the irrigation system is a necessity.
Well, sorry, just, sorry, I'll come back to you just for a sec. I guess, I guess to answer your question councillor Logan though, is I did make a specific request to counts, or excuse me, to staff to say, if this irrigation system is not in place, what is the ramifications to the city? The answer I got back was ramifications to the city is that it's twelve hundred dollars a year to do that for that three years until the tree is established. And in addition to that twelve hundred dollars, or that cost, it means whatever that time is spent with public works watering those trees means they're not doing something else in addition. So to build an irrigation system that maintains and has the longevity of those trees surviving long-term will either have to be born somewhere. There is a cost. So it's a matter of, is it the taxpayer that should incur that cost, or should it be the developer that ensures that cost? And so that's my argument to it, but councillor Baxter?
Yeah, I support what councillor Kobayashi is saying on the drought-proof trees, and I hope that a tree will be chosen, whether native or not, that will be drought-proof three years from now. But I think all trees need, in a situation such as a boulevard, need some support the first three years, because normally they would, the seedlings would grow in a somewhat sheltered environment shaded by other trees around them where they need less water. But in a boulevard, they're fully exposed to the sun as they're initially establishing their roots and developing their own water collection system.
If there's no more discussion, I'm going to call the question on the amendment, which is just about the irrigation system. So, and then we'll come back to the main motion. So just on the amendment, those in favor? Those opposed? Please note that councillor Logan and Kobayashi opposed. So that carried. Then I will move to the main motion. Excuse, as amended, thank you.
I have an amendment to propose.
You have another one?
Yeah. So I propose that the conditions also include the standards being altered to provide a two-meter-wide sidewalk on Lagoon Road.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a sec? Thank you, seconded. Discussion, councillor Baxter?
First of all, can I ask staff the question? What does the transportation plan currently indicate for Lagoon Road, in the way of sidewalks?
The transportation master plan for Lagoon Road is mixed up a little bit with the development agreement that's tied for the adjacent lands beside it. Transportation master plan shows for this portion of this side of Lagoon Road to be a one-point-eight-meter sidewalk, and for the opposite side of Lagoon Road to be a two-meter sidewalk.
Then I'd be happy to change the amendment to suggest that the requirement matched the transportation master plan.
For one-point-eight.
Councillor Day, you're comfortable with that amendment?
Yes.
Okay, so with that amended, changing it to one-point-eight, is there any, do you want to motivate? Do you have any thing you want to?
Well, I'd just like to remind the council that the, there was talk here about the school parties that go down Lagoon Road, and although there was also discussion that this is a very small piece of sidewalk, it's a piece of the puzzle, and, you know, it's a piece that the rest of the community doesn't have to pay for, and the money we have can be used to pay to continue it. And I think it's an important safety issue, if only for the school groups, but also because we want more and more people walking. And right now, it's not very attractive to walkers. As somebody once said, you know, you can't really do a head count on the potential for the use of a bridge, because people are reluctant to swim the river. And, you know, we, people are reluctant to walk down there right now, because there is no sidewalk over most of it, and I think the more we add, the better.
Thank you. Councillor Day?
Thank you. Just wanted to speak up on behalf of the Inter-Municipal Advisory Committee on Disability Issues, who have repeatedly explained how important it is to have even small pieces of more accessible infrastructure, because as councillor Baxter mentioned, it's one part of the puzzle, but once one part of the puzzle is undersized, there's very little chance of increasing that to the level that's really required. So just, people who have disabilities, I've always thought of myself as an able-bodied person, but I am only one slip and fall away from being less able-bodied as we all are. So anyone who's had to facilitate an air cast or crutches knows all too well what a difference it makes when it's easier to navigate.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion on the proposed amendment? Seeing none, I'll call the question on the amendment. All those in favor? Opposed? Sorry, I'm going to do it one more time. I apologize. Wait, no, and I don't need to. So it fails, because it's three-three. So it's, the opposition is councillor Logan, Jensen, and Kobayashi. Going back to the main motion, any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? None opposed. Moving on to eight point six, report regarding, from the planner regarding three-four-seven-six Wishard Road amended development agreement, site clearing. The property owners of three-four-seven-six Wishard Road have requested that development agreement be amended to delete the requirement that clearing of a phase can only commence after construction. In the previous phase, has been at least fifty percent completed. Staff are supportive of the proposed amendment to the development agreement to allow phasing to proceed independently, but recommend that council consider including a condition that clearing in any phase would be limited to allowing for site access and servicing, and clearing of the building site would be permitted after a building permit is issued. There is a recommendation that I will quickly read out and then look for a mover and a seconder, that section fourteen of the section two-one-nine covenant regarding three-four-seven-six Wishard Road be deleted and replaced with the following wording. One, site clearing can be undertaken in any phase but is limited to the construction of service and access roads. And two, that site clearing of the building site is not to be undertaken until a building permit has been issued. May I get a mover?
I'll move the recommendation, worship.
Thank you, moved by councillor Logan, seconded by councillor Kobayashi. Discussion, councillor Day?
Thank you. Question to staff, my concern is if the, if there's any uncertainty about whether the clearing that's being done is for the construction of services and access roads, or if it's actually for a building site, what is the consequence under this amendment if additional clearing is undertaken?
Through you, worship. There's no great answer to that. We have to chase the developer through the court system for consequences of action. This covenant that's being proposed is largely to enable the developer to be able to move forward on the other portion, the amendment to the covenant that's being proposed to enable the developer to be able to move forward and have options if that developer did not appropriately clear the lands as per the approval. It would be an infraction on his issued development permit that we'd have to go through the courts to enforce.
So my concern is, when we originally laid out the plan for this development, we wanted to ensure a couple of things. One, that, you know, we didn't end up with a large disturbed site that sat for years without moving forward, but also we wanted to ensure that some areas are protected, and there is a significant portion of this site adjacent to Havenwood Park that does need protection, and I would like to have something clearly articulated that if, that if any inappropriate clearing were to take place, that there would be a consequence that is understood right from the get-go. I don't want to, I don't want to have any of what happens there be subject to any misunderstanding.
It's, I mean, that's difficult councillor Day, because we, staff have just said that the only consequence to that is through the court system. So I'm not really sure what else that we could do to do that, if it needs to go through the courts.
Well, but as it's currently written, there is only the court system, but there is no clear articulation about what is not allowed to be cleared, and I have a concern about that.
Through the chair, this is a covenant. So it's a section two-nineteen covenant that's placed on the lands, and that covenant can read positively or negatively in regards to how the land are exercised. The staff's visions for any sort of clearing on the land is that it's not permitted until we have a set of plans that we have in place, which will require a development permit. That development permit is going to place restrictions on fencing, site clearing limits, visible obstacles. But going back to that first statement, that this is a section two-nineteen covenant that can be positive or negative, it's up to the agreement of both parties, and council may choose to say, if the developer trespasses on adjacent lands or causes negative effect on adjacent lands, excluding blowdowns or things out of the developer's control, that there's a penalty of X. The enforceability of that statement is something that I'd need to research further, but there's a suggestion that you may be able to do it. I am not a lawyer, would need to go speak with a lawyer to confirm its registrability.
So I guess where I'm at with that is that I'd like to move that we refer this to the next council meeting, after which we allow staff the opportunity to get clarification on that.
Did you want to say something first before?
Through your chair, thank you very much. It would be an open-ended report back to council unless we knew how we were shaping it. The question to the solicitor would be framed on, is it a registrable document or not? Wording would help staff in terms of what sort of penalty clause council may wish to impose, so that that may be brought forward back with the report. This developer has shown, I'm going to say, very, very productive action in realizing the intent of the covenant in place right now, and has worked very diligently over the last year to get to this point.
So we have a motion. I don't have a seconder yet. Is there a second or two councillor Day's motion? Seeing none, I will move back to the original motion that we have on the table. Correct? I already have a mover and a seconder on that. Councillor Logan?
Thank you, you worship. I will be supporting the recommendation. I think although noble with our original requirements about site clearing, based on experience that occurred in the Latourie Valley, I think what I didn't anticipate was the disruption to the neighborhood by not allowing the full servicing to continue. So in essence, the stop and start, and then, or start and stop, and then starting again, and then stopping again with each phase, when you're putting in the sewer servicing. That in itself is quite disruptive for the neighborhood, as opposed to the developer coming in and putting all the services on the right-of-way all at once, mobilizing one crew, one set of equipment, one disruption. And in fact, it, you know, led to probably some unintended consequences from my perspective. So from a neighborhood perspective, I think it's more beneficial to just get in there, get the servicing done, get the heck out, and the nice thing too is, when there's money in the ground, it's another incentive for them to carry on with the project, and that's certainly what we want them to do and then move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Day?
Thank you. As written, I won't be supporting the motion then, because it seems to me that we're really supporting what has been a clear cut of what was supposed to be left as a treed park area, which was cut down. There appears to be no consequence if the rules are not followed here, and without any wording in this motion to address what has happened and can happen again, I will not be supporting it.
All right, seeing no other discussion, I will call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Councillor Day opposed. Moving on to eight point seven, I hope, all right. Eight point seven, recommendation from Committee of the Whole, oh, the two thousand nineteen Sustainable Infrastructure Replacement Plan. At the Committee of the Whole meeting held January twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, the committee considered the Sustainable Infrastructure Replacement Plan two thousand nineteen to two thousand sixty-eight. Staff presented a fifty-year sustainable infrastructure plan for council's consideration. Ten recommendations were made at the meeting, which I will put forward individually for council consideration. However, I would like to suggest that the committee did make ten recommendations, but six were unanimous, excuse me. The six that were unanimous were one, three, five, eight, nine, and ten. I would suggest that we move those six together and then only vote on the four that were not unanimous. So may I get a motion for those six?
I'll move those six, worship.
Thank you, moved by councillor Logan.
Second.
Seconded by councillor Baxter. Any discussion on those six? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried unanimously. I'm going to move back then to recommendation number two, that council direct staff to establish a road core, I'm not going to read them. You guys, you can see it too, right? Is everybody comfortable with me not reading it? Councillor Day opposed before, can I get a mover and a seconder, and then I'll do a discussion?
Move the recommendation.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved by Logan and Baxter. Discussion, councillor Day?
Thank you. The reason that I'm opposed to this is that we are taking what is unspent budget and transferring, sorry, I'm on the wrong motion. The roads' core capital budget is, it's a budget based on an idea of what we think we will do. So my concern is that that idea may be quite unrealized and may end up just being a straightforward rollover to reserve funds, which I suppose is okay, but it isn't really true to our budgeting practice, which is if our plan is to simply put money in reserve and then use it for roads if we want to later, that's one thing, but to put it in the roads' budget, not use it, and then just roll it into the reserves is, could potentially inflate our tax rate.
Any, councillor Day, or excuse me, councillor Baxter?
I see the, what councillor Day is getting at, but I've looked at the way the budget has been presented this year and the way we have been well-informed as to how big the... has been presented this year and the way we have been well informed as to how big the reserves are and how they've increased. And I think it's going to be fairly clear to all of us if these reserves are getting too big. On the other hand, having reserves in hand is part of smoothing out the ups and downs of capital expenditure, as the CFOs explain to us. And I think a necessary part. So, I'm in favor of this, but I'm not saying it should be done ad infinitum, depending on how the spending goes in the future. And I'm sure we will review that when the time comes.
So, my question is just about, when we put money into the roads' budget, the roads' core budget, is that a capital? Or is that considered maintenance?
Look to Director of Finance.
Through your worship, it really can depend. It can go both ways. And so, in previous budget, it was actually part of the core operating budget. However, we found more often than not, that budget, which, when used, was for capital purposes, which is why we've established the core capital budget.
Okay. So, I guess that was part of my original issue with it, was that, to me, we're moving from what seemed like a maintenance budget into a capital reserve fund. So, I think they're a little bit different. I could probably go either way on this one.
Well, we're going to find out right now. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried unanimously. Number four, I'm like, oh, well, okay, I'll read it quick. That council direct staff to transfer unspent RCMP contract operating budgets to the police building capital reserve annually. May I get a mover and a second, please? Moved by Counsel Kobiyashi, seconded by?
Second.
Second by Counsel Baxter. Any discussion? Counsel Day?
Thank you. So, this is the one I have more of a problem with. And the reason I have a problem with it is because we're, we're taking the money that was supposed to be spent on RCMP officers and moving it into a reserve for the police building. And I wouldn't have a problem with it if we were moving it into a reserve to fund people, police officers. But I really don't like that we're moving it into a capital reserve. Capital's usually pretty darned easy to come up with. People money is a lot harder to find. And so, I think it should be, you know, if you want to have a reserve fund for, you know, hiring additional people to do the work that needs to be done, I would be much more comfortable with that.
Counsel Logan?
Thank you, your worship. I hear, I hear the argument, but unfortunately, when we're transferring surpluses, because we haven't reached our strength, and we're transferring that surplus to, for additional bodies, that's not sustainable funding that will continue on in perpetuity. That's, that's, that's an extra, because we haven't got our strength. So, I think it's quite prudent, actually, to put that one-time surplus from not having our full strength, and keeping it within the RCMP realm to, into the police building for repairs and expansions that will be coming down the road, PDQ. And so, we're having a little bit of a buffer here. So, I'm wholeheartedly support this. And I do support, you know, adding additional strength, for sure, but ensuring that the proper operating dollars are included in the budget.
Counsel Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I hear exactly what Counsel Day is saying, and I find myself agreeing with it. The only, I would only qualify that by saying that I have had discussions with the RCMP inspector, and they're, in a bad way physically with their physical structure. And he is looking for some help from us. So, I think it is, it's not, it's not misspent or misguided, and it's going to pens and pencils and desks and workspaces and cubes and renovations. So, I do think it serves our cadre of officers perhaps just slightly differently.
Counsel Baxter?
I ask for clarification from the Chief Financial Officer on this.
Sure.
What can I clarify?
Well, there's a discussion going on that the money that is surplus in the wage account, if you like, ending up in the building account, is lost to wages in the future.
Thank you, through your worship. I wholeheartedly appreciate the concerns that Counsel Day has raised, because it should be our intention, when we establish RCMP budget that funds our officers, to spend that on officers. However, at the end of the year, if we haven't met that strength, we have a one-time surplus. And what Counsel Logan has said is spot-on. We can't rely on a reserve to sustainably fund an ongoing operating expense. So, instead, what we, what we're suggesting is we shift it into the building, which is, which can fund one-time expenditures in the form of a capital budget. However, it would be fully inappropriate for, and frankly dishonest, for the city to plan for a surplus. We're not allowed to do that. So, the RCMP officer in charge is tasked with staffing the detachment to the best of his ability.
Counsel Kobiyashi?
Yeah, just a comment. If we, if we didn't have this, and the whole, I guess, the whole theory behind this is that we don't want to do these, we don't want to have the surprises, the bumps in the tax, right? So, this is why I totally agree with it, because it keeps it within the RCMP family right now. And as Counsel Logan has said, I know they've got some, some pretty expensive upcoming expenses on the capital side there. And, you know, a prime example is what happened this year. We got a bit of a surprise. And thank God we had that, that capital reserve fund, because it didn't cost the tax, there was no bump in the, in taxpayers' impact to taxpayers. So, that's why I fully support this.
All right. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Oh, Counsel Jensen. No, you were just being annoying. What are you doing?
I left it hanging too long.
Oh, you left it hanging too long. Okay. It passed unanimously. All right. The third motion, number six. That council direct staff to integrate policies into the 2019 Financial Plan Bylaw to include incremental operational and sustainable infrastructure replacement costs in the financial plan when capital assets are contributed to the city. May I get a mover and a second, please? Moved by Counsel Kobiyashi, seconded by Counsel Baxter. Any discussion? Counsel Day?
Thank you. I'm just trying to understand, because the incremental operating and sustainable infrastructure replacement costs are at best an estimate. Can you tell me how reliable an estimate they would be?
Through your worship, it entirely depends on the new capital service that we're talking about. So, for instance, in our most recent budget discussions, we discussed the possibility of investing in land development software. We can very reasonably predict the incremental operating costs, the licensing costs for that. But if we're talking about a brand-new capital service, a brand-new sports field, typically it takes a bit more history, and budgets become adjusted through the process after a couple of years of implementation.
So, are you quite comfortable that you can make an estimate that isn't terribly different from what we're likely to experience?
Through your worship, typically, I'll recommend, especially for the less predictable new capital services, a range. And we will begin funding that range in the subsequent financial year. But we test those assumptions every single year when we go through the budget in exhaustive detail, and we can simply adjust it. So, for instance, when we integrate the sustainable infrastructure replacement costs, we're essentially upping our transfer to reserve. We can simply adjust that amount annually if we find that our assumptions were off in any way.
So, I guess my discomfort is around that estimation. And I, I just want to make sure we don't end up in a fudge-it-budget situation, not present staff exempted from that. I don't, I don't mean to be hard on you, only mean that over time, sometimes these things have been forgotten. And I want us to have as realistic a budget as possible.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question on six. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried unanimously. And then finally, the last one, seven. That council direct staff to integrate policies into the 2019 Financial Plan Bylaw to integrate full life cycle costs into the financial plan when new capital services are approved. Looking for a mover and a second.
Second.
Counsel Kobiyashi and Counsel Logan. Discussion? Counsel Day?
So, again, I just need to know, when is this going to be reevaluated? Because life cycle costs, you know, the useful life might be shorter or longer than we anticipate. I think this building was 15 years old or so. When I drew to the then-financial officer's attention, that it wasn't a brand-new building anymore, and we needed to start thinking about it. So, sometimes you can go, you know, a long time without recognizing that your asset is getting older. And while I agree with planning for it, I'm just concerned about how we plan for that, and that it doesn't get misinterpreted over time.
Thank you, through your worship. I do recall hearing loud and clear from the committee when the Sustainable Infrastructure Plan was presented, that this needs to be reviewed extensively periodically. And the reason being, it's a 12-year plan, which includes not insignificant tax increases. So, if the assumptions that were made to develop a plan are significantly different than reality, then we're disadvantaging the existing taxpayers in an effort to guard the future taxpayers. So, it's just as important to evaluate those assumptions for the benefit of the current taxpayers. Now, I've taken general direction from council that the major assumptions of this plan need to be analyzed annually. Assumption is, inflation is really going to be the largest assumption that needs to be evaluated. But it would be welcomed if at some point, council directed that an exhaustive review be done in a periodic basis, recommend anywhere between every three and five years. Certainly, staff would take it upon themselves to recommend that a detailed review be done before the 12-year plan is complete.
Any other, excuse me, any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried unanimously. So, that takes us through 8.7. 8.8. Recommendations from Committee of the Whole of February 4 regarding park service levels. There's a recommendation that council please endorse, not, they don't, okay, it doesn't say please. That council endorse the current levels of service for the Parks Department. Can I just, thank you. Moved by Counsel Baxter, Counsel Jensen. Discussion, Counsel Day?
Thank you. So, I believe this motion is only referring to how frequently staff would service parks. And I just wanted to note that the capital infrastructure in a number of our parks has been upgraded. Some of it, you know, 10 years ago, some of it five years ago. And I don't, I don't recall seeing a matrix about the capital infrastructure in terms of when its replacement is coming due. But I will support the current levels of service as we go through this, but just flagging that the infrastructure itself may need to be looked at.
All right. Thank you. Counsel Baxter, then Kobiyashi?
I just want to make clear that I don't think the current levels of actual service of our parks are adequate. However, I know that we are going to be gathering data on what the, those current levels are in, in terms of, you know, per park numbers, which we don't have right now. And that we're going to make, be able to make much better, much more accurate changes to the current levels of service in the future. And that is difficult to do now. That is why I make this motion.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Kobiyashi?
I think Counsel Baxter summed up what I wanted to say.
Full your thunder?
I think so. Because, I mean, I guess what I learned after the fact, after voting on this at Committee of the Whole, I had no realization of how many people FTEs it really took. And I did find that number very, very high. Sixteen and a half of 25 people. You go, wow, that's most of the workforce. I mean, really? I mean, so, I am concerned about that. But then, like I said, it was based on what data. And, well, I guess we'll just, I'm willing to give it a try, I guess. So, anyways, and I think Michael Yu is the one that educated me on it. Yeah. Anyways, thank you.
Sorry, I'm going to go to Jensen, then Baxter.
Thank you, your worship. I too have some questions about the collection of that data. And it is only a one-year snapshot. And I am loathe to make some serious staffing changes without giving that a deeper, some deeper thought and a better understanding. You know, some of them that jump out on me, like the boulevard at Byzanton Place, near where someone lives around here. And the number of hours it took to care for that, I think I could go down there on a Saturday afternoon and put my gloves on and give it a pretty good go. So, I am loathe to, you know, to make any real serious considerations on staffing levels until we have a deeper understanding of that. However, having said that, I did hear loud and clear from this community, as I trudged around, that people are not happy with the level of maintenance in the parks. I agree with that. So, is there a decision to be taken here? I think there is. I just would like time and more information, which is why I will support the motion.
Thank you, Counsel Baxter.
Let's start my note that I wrote this motion before casting. There's no reference to that document that we saw at the committee.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah.
That we endorse the current levels of service, which I do, for now.
All right. Any other discussion? Counsel Day?
Thank you. I just, I agree with everyone that it's going to take time to really get a handle on this question. I think we all, it's a very subjective, and it's a little bit all over the place, and we don't have good enough data. That we have 16 people is amazing, because we used to have four.
Seeing no other discussion, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. 8.9. Recommendations from the Committee of the Whole regarding 2018, 2019 grants and aid. All right. So, you're going to need to work with me here, people. So, here's what my suggestion is. At the Committee of the Whole meeting held January 21, 2019, council considered 2019 grant and aid request. 12 recommendations were made and are presented, starting on page 153 of the agenda. Here is my suggested approach versus going line by line, is that we ask, then I'm going to ask the council, if there's any opposition to any of these motions that we separated out, excluding the two motions that Counsel Baxter and Counsel Kobiyashi declared a conflict of interest, I'll need to do those no matter what, as individuals. But I would like to do the rest as a group, and unless there's a specific line item that somebody would like me to specifically pull out of that group. And if there's, if I don't see anybody telling me that there's a specific line item that they would like me to pull out, we're going to vote on it as a group. So, okay, great. Thank you. So, So, okay, okay, we're doing it backwards, but that works out perfect. So I've got the 10 recommendations which included, so these are the 10 recommendations excluding the Wanda Fuka Performing Arts Center and excluding the Royal Roads University because those are the two conflicts. So with the 10, I will call the question, excuse me, discussion on the 10? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Counselor Baxter, could you excuse yourself? Thank you.
Sorry, Rob. I'm sorry. We didn't get a motion.
Oh, did I not have a mover, seconder?
Yes.
Yeah, Mike, I'm sorry, Counselor Baxter was the mover and that was my fault, sorry, I should have said it back. Yeah, we're good. Okay. So I need a mover regarding that the funding in the amount of $2,000 be approved for the Wanda Fuka Arts Center Society. They have a move by Counselor Day, seconded by Counselor Logan. Discussion at all? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Counselor Kobayashi, could you excuse yourself? And then, and then you won't have to leave. Okay. So the motion that I need is that funding in the amount of $500 be approved for the Royal Roads University School of Humanitarian Studies. Thank you, Counselor Day, seconder please. Counselor Baxter, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. And that was, that was awesome. I was looking at three pages of notes. Counselor.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just, I guess through you to staff, that whole grant and aid process was a nightmare and it was very uncomfortable and very subjective. So I wonder, without a motion per se, but a review of the policy might be in order prior to the November 2019 deadline, in case we choose to, to do something differently then, you know, there's, there's some notice. I'm happy to make a motion to that effect unless staff are happy with.
Well, wait a second, I got a, I got a mover. I need a seconder and then we'll have discussion and we'll come back to it. Okay, so Counselor Logan made the motion. Do you have it? Do you have the actual motion? Okay, Counselor Baxter seconded it. Do you need to motivate at all anymore? You're good. You don't want to say anything else as the mover. Okay, or Counselor Kobayashi?
Thank you very, thank you very much. Just what I did, because that was a cluster, I was very upset, having spent four hours in here. And so on my own initiative, what I went off and did is I met with three different mayors from three different municipalities, found out what they did for the process. They've got it streamlined because it takes them 15 minutes to deal with it. So what I did is I combined the three processes and actually I was going to give it to staff, I did the work for you. And so I'm sorry, I didn't mean to do that. It was, it was bad on me, shame on me, but it's done and I was just going to pass it off to staff and let them just finish it off and polish it off for us.
Great. Well, that'll help them. It'll just make it faster as the motion, as we move forward. Counselor Baxter?
I've seen the, those, at least one of those other methods and they trouble me. They seem to be very mechanistic and devoting very little time to groups who devote a lot of time to other people. And I don't dislike our process. I know it was very, very difficult because of our unfamiliarity with it on the part of the new boys like me. But I, I think in giving this task to staff, I don't think, unless somebody's going to correct me, this motion comes with, we want you to write it a certain way. In fact, I think, I think if staff asked all of us separately, they would find, you know, there's a, there's a wide range of opinions on what it ought to look like. So I don't think this is an easy task that we give to staff and they're probably going to have to come up with options for us to choose between. And so I just want to make sure that everybody agrees with that as we pass it.
Yeah. And, and just as a clarification, what I would expect if this motion did pass would be that staff would, would do some work, but it would come back to a COTW and there would be a full discussion through that and we would, we would, we would move on together as a council, that we were comfortable with that. But versus, versus us just being surprised in the moment when we're in the next grant and aid, that we actually do some work ahead of time, so we all are in agreement of how to proceed. Counselor Day? And then Counselor Logan?
Thanks. So I just wanted to say that I, you know, I'm really not sure where this, what this motion is bringing back to us, but because we're going to have a fulsome discussion once it does come back to us, I'm all right with supporting it. I do understand that it was a bit of a messy meeting. I would have to disagree that we're the only ones with messy grant and aid meetings because I do facilitate IACTI applying to numerous other municipalities for grants and I've been to the wall and back with those initiatives where we've made great efforts to have representation at the meetings, only to have, you know, people with disabilities show up for a meeting, scramble to be able to find the facilities accessible and then be sent home and come back two weeks later to do it all over again. So we're not the only ones who struggle with the, with the process, but I do agree that thinking about it in advance is probably a good idea to make the best use of our time and our volunteer groups' times.
Thank you. Counselor.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just want to say this, this year was not the only year that we had some frustration that this particular topic is always a bit of frustration during, during budget time. And so, you know, I, I really find it doesn't do any, it does almost a disservice to, to our residents, but also those that are applying for grants because we're, we're, we're all over the place, you know? We look quite disheveled and, and not very organized when we're trying to debate 50 bucks here, 20 bucks there. So I'm looking for a process that is probably more organized, more fair and, and probably more predictable for, for the service providers. I, I don't know what that looks like, but clearly the process that we've entailed, we've, we've used over the last number of years just hasn't been a good use of anybody's time. And, and I would say when we were broke and had no capital money, it was easy because we weren't giving any freaking grants. And, you know, to be quite honest with you. So we've got a couple of extra dollars, but it seems that people know that and it, more applications come in and we are having to nickel and dime ourselves to death and I think that's been the frustration. So I have no ulterior motives or, or specific direction in terms of where the policy should go, just that we should have a look at it with the eyes of refining the process.
Great, thank you. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Do you need the motion?
Yeah. The motion is that the grant and aid policy be reviewed with a view to implement any changes prior to the November 2019 grant application deadline.
So I'll call the question one more time. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. 8.10, recommendation from committee of the whole on February 4th. At the February 4th, 2019 committee of the whole meeting, the committee discussed how to advance the strategic plan and settled on the recommendation that the strategic plan be referred to a second facilitated committee of the whole meeting for further discussion. May I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Thank you, moved by Counselor Baxter, seconded by Counselor Jensen. Discussion? Counselor Baxter?
I move an amendment to remove the word facilitated.
So, okay. All right, so I need a seconder and then we can discuss it. Okay, second for discussion. Counselor Baxter, could you, I think the, the reason there was a stalling on that was facilitated suggests that we have an outside, you are suggesting we don't need an outside consultant?
Yeah, I did make this argument at the time and I've thought more about it and I, I think we're pretty good at discussing things together and coming to solutions. And I think that if we could find a facilitator that could be relied upon never to impose their own opinion on the discussion, I would be great with that. But so far, I don't see that there's very many of those and I know it maybe seems like a minor imposition in some cases, but this is, this is a complex discussion that we need to have and I think it needs to be between us.
Okay, thank you. Before I go to anyone on council, the, I just want to be clear that staff did consider that it was going to be a new facilitator. It would not be a facilitator we have used in the past, but I will, and this was a motion that came out of committee of the whole, so this is our motion. If you guys choose to knock it down, you can. I guess I would go to staff, however, just with the question regarding, do you, do you believe that we could accomplish the strategic plan and move that forward without an outside facilitator?
Your Worship, I, I think you, you can because you've done most of the work already and some more work was done by finance staff, you know, to put a bit more meat into the, into the document. So I think it could be done internally. The big thing issue here is to make sure that the whole of council is willing to come to a decision on it and staff could be there to assist. I think it could be done. The reason why facilitators are often used, it's like a third party at arm's length to the organization, which quite often helps so that they don't have a vested interest in what you're trying to accomplish. All they're trying to do is guide you to a point of resolution so you come out with a, with, with a strategic document you believe in and that it has some sort of priority built into it.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Day, then Baxter.
I guess I've certainly seen our strategic plan before we ever called it a strategic plan, come to a point where almost every member of the council of the day was, you know, championing their projects. And, and I really don't want to feel that I'm being dismissed or that my projects are being dismissed or that anyone else's projects are, are being elevated based on the relationships that we have with one another. So for that reason, I would prefer that there was an arm's length third party facilitating and I think it makes it easier for staff. Certainly, we always seem to get in the position of the facilitator more or less putting her arms on her hips and saying, you can't have 12 priorities. So we do have to realistically group things together and, and come up with priorities that, that, that we can believe in, the outcome of that set of priorities moving the city forward. So I'm just advocating that I think there should be a third party because I think that would make it easier for staff. I think that might make it easier for council, that said, none of it is going to work if we don't agree to be strategic together. So I appreciate what Counselor Baxter is saying, that theoretically, we could do this all ourselves, but I think it is harder than with a third party.
Thank you. Counselor Baxter?
I just wanted to say, I think it would be a brave CAO that would respond to your question, Your Worship, by expressing a lack of confidence in his counsel. And I appreciate the finesse with which Mr. Pease delivered that response.
All right. Seeing no other discussion on the amendment, I have a discussion on amendment Kobayashi.
Just, just another, just a comment for all council here. Our biggest issue is that I just hope we're not going back to committee of the whole for second session so that we can just add more strategic priorities? Because I, I'm telling you right now, the biggest challenge that we have upcoming on this one right now is that, I think we've captured them, but I think we're all having troubles digesting which one's more important because exactly what Counselor Day has said, but you know, it's, there's maybe some that we have as, as our own peeves right now. And so I, I think they're all there, they're all there and maybe the wording might be, has to be shifted a little bit, but I think the biggest issue that we have in this facilitation is taking it down from the 20, whatever we have there, down to maybe eight, I'm going to tell you, maximum. So I think that's the facilitation, you know, of anything that we have and that's what we're going to have to capture. Because I think the ground rules from the start is that let's not introduce new things because we're going to be adding, I, I could see this right now. And, and so, so I'm just backing up what everyone else is saying.
Counselor Baxter?
Counselor Kobayashi, I was relying on you to keep us disciplined there and, and I think that a lot of the problem is that what's on the list currently, a lot of it, is not strategic. It's actually daily work or, and, and I think that doesn't speak well to the facilitated process that we ended up with something which I don't believe is, is entirely strategic.
Counselor Kobayashi?
One request to, through, through the chair, just one request to staff. I think one of the things that can help us a lot is to take some of those strategic priorities that we have and there's a lot of them that you're already doing, like they're part of day-to-day operations. So let's, let's get those ones out because you're doing them already. So why are they strategic priorities? You know what I mean? So I, I'm just suggesting this as a start.
All right, so we've got the amendment, the amended motion is to remove the word facilitated. So I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? It fails. The, the opposition is Counselor Day, Logan, Jensen, and Martin. So going back to the first, did you, did you oppose as well? I'm sorry, so Kobayashi is, well.
What happened last time too.
I guess I should have said who voted for it. Is, yeah, welcome to my life. Moving back to the main motion that the strategic, so I'm back on the main motion, which is that the strategic plan be referred to a second facilitated committee of the whole meeting for further discussion. That is still on the table. Is there any other discussion before I call the question? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? None opposed? 811, recommendation from the committee of the whole, February 18th. At the committee of the whole meeting held February 18th, the committee discussed council initiatives that included forming a committee, yeah, this is all Stewart, Parkinson. Does, before I read this all through, does council wish to, to, sorry, not the layout, what's that word, Cynthia? What's that? Differ. Or table? Should we, should we defer this until Counselor Parkinson's returns? Because he was the one who made these motions. Okay, so we, we, okay, thank you. Counselor Kobayashi made the motion and Counselor Jensen seconded it. Any, I guess there's no discussion on deferment. Is there discussion on deferment?
Only as to the appropriateness of the motion.
There you go. Do you have an, do you have a question about the appropriateness of the motion?
Well, I just would like to say that if we were going to pass it, then.
Hey, wait a second, you're not going to sneak that in. Nice try. All right, I call, calling the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Counselor Baxter opposed. Differ. 8, 8, 812, yeah. Recommendation from committee of the whole, February 19th. At the committee of the whole meeting held February 19th, staff provide an overview of the capital budget. There's, there's a recommendation for consideration that council, excuse me, that, that committee recommends to council that staff report back on the costs of leasing vehicles versus buying, including total lifestyle, life cycle costs.
I'll move that. Second.
Okay, thank you. Discussion? Counselor Day?
Thank you. I, I think this is, well, I've been here too long, but. I, I think this is, well, I've been here too long, but it, it's going back over ground that, that we have looked at before. I, I'm willing to entertain it simply because we may not have looked at it this way or there might be new information. It was quite a while ago that we, that we did consider that. And I, and I just remind council that, that once motions are made, they belong to all of us here at the table. So, you know, they're not someone's motion, they're our motion. So get behind them or, or, or get rid of them, but they're ours.
Any other discussion? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. I'm starting to get tired. Director of Finance, early budget approval, 2019. Staff are looking to council to provide early budget approvals to proceed with capital spending for city hall furniture and the Sterling dump truck unit 48 replacement.
Move the rec, oh, sorry.
No, you can move that, you can move that.
Move the recommendation.
Sure. All right. So we got that recommenda, um, sorry, let me, do you mind? Do you mind if I go back? So there's a staff recommendation, so I'd just like to read the staff recommendation so that you move the proper. So the staff recommendation is that staff be directed to proceed with the purchase of the city hall workstation furniture not to exceed $70,000 and that staff be directed to proceed with the purchase of a Sterling dump truck unit 48 replacement not to exceed And there's one additional thing, but I can do that after since you made that motion. So Counselor Baxter's making that motion. May I have a second or?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on those two subjects? Counselor?
Thank you, your worship. Just one question through you to, to staff. What is the trigger to, to initiate the replacement of a fleet vehicle like a dump truck?
Through your worship, the main driver is our E3 fleet review, which recommends the best time to replace a vehicle, the most economical time, and also with emissions in mind. So that's the typical trigger. There's other considerations taken on a case-by-case basis. They're evaluated by the mechanic as they come due for replacement.
Thank you.
Counselor Jensen?
So, help me out for a second here. Is this piece of equipment broken or out of date then, or can we not drive it till it blows up?
Through your worship, I appreciate that question because we get that often. Can't we just defer this? The, and the answer is yes, it's not broken. We could continue to use the vehicle that we're suggesting be replaced in this budget. However, the E3 fleet review recommends the optimal year to replace it, that is the most economic year to replace it. And it takes into consideration a couple of things. The salvage value of that vehicle at that year, if we continue to defer it, the amortization of that salvage value will exceed what we otherwise would have earned from it in that year of, of sale. Also, the maintenance costs exceed past that point. So the idea here is that if we continue to hold on to it, the maintenance costs that will result will exceed the, the economic value of selling it now, getting the proceeds and having reduced maintenance costs. It's not a perfect science, but it's designed to dispose of vehicles at the most economical time.
Thank you. Is that, you good? Okay. Counselor Baxter?
When I was much younger, I worked for a very large construction company that ran its own very large fleet. And they replaced their vehicles in exactly the same way, with exactly the same criteria. The idea being, you know, maximize your return on the vehicle that you sell rather than driving it until it's blown up and then you're basically giving it away.
All right. Counselor Day?
Thanks. I just wanted to provide an explanation for why I'm supporting the recommendation, especially given the city hall workstation furniture at $70,000, which to most laypeople seems like a lot of money. But the reason I'm supporting this is because we've had a continual revamping of city hall in order to configure it to fit people better. And that has allowed us to continue to operate our municipal offices here and not have to create a new building or lease a new building elsewhere, which is something we have a number of years ago considered a couple of times in the past 10 years. So although it does seem like a fairly large expenditure to be spending $70,000 on office furniture, it is based on having reconfigured our area to fit the people that we need into the space that we have in a more efficient manner.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? I'm sorry, Michael, were you in favor or opposed?
I'm in favor.
You were in favor, okay.
I'm in favor.
Staying on eight point one three, the, in addition, the council chambers were reconfigured at the beginning of this council term. I would like to look to council for their feedback on this new configuration. And if acceptable, we need to ensure that there are funds dated to, dedicated to upgrade the chambers, which would include the furnishing, updating the sound system, getting a high-definition camera for webcasting, and up, updating the electrical. And there's a motion that I will just make a suggestion and then we can have the discussion, that staff be directed to report on the options and costs associated with updating the council chambers. Updates may include furniture, updating the sound system, high-definition camera for webcasting, and updating the electrical to be included in the 2019 budget. May I have a motion to that effect? Counselor Day? Are you moving? No, you're not moving that. Okay, Counselor Baxter's moving that? Who's second or second? Thank you. Counselor Day and then Kobayashi.
So I find myself in a really difficult position because these are things that I think are important and I, I would ordinarily support doing. But what's bothering me about this is the public has absolutely no way of knowing to expect this. It's not on the agenda, it's not in the report. I, I can appreciate that the motion is looking to have a report come back to us, but I would have appreciated having it at least identified on the agenda so that we could have had feedback from, from people or be prepared for this item coming forward.
Well, just before, so to answer Counselor Day's thing, the reconfiguration of this chamber was at the direction of council. And so I was looking to council to tell me, do you guys like this configuration or do you want to go back to the old configuration of the way it was where staff sat at the table and, and everything? And if we were to go back to the old, we don't need to worry about furnitures, we don't need to worry about changing the electrical, we don't need to worry about any of those things. If this council likes this configuration and would like to support moving that forward, then I will need to get a report from staff telling council, this is what it will cost for us to do those things in that. But there's not much of a point for me to ask staff to do that work if this council has no desire for this configuration to stay and that they would like to go back to the old configuration. Counselor, Counselor, actually, I'm going to go Baxter and then back to Kobe. Actually, no, excuse me. It's Kobayashi, then Baxter, then Day.
I think I'm going to have to back Counselor Day on this because it's a, it's a surprise. I mean, I didn't know this was coming. And I know the question you've asked, that's fair, but now it's, yeah, the financial side and I mean, and so, you know, to me, I would have thought you could just done that with your powers mayor, so I don't know. Don't ask me. I just thought this was, yeah, I wasn't prepared for this, so, the conversation.
Okay. Okay. Counselor Baxter?
On this agenda is, arises from a process of staff saying that a report is needed on this or that because of some development or whatever. And that a report arrives at this table with no announcement that it is going to arrive other than the agenda of that meeting. If you look at what you're suggesting here, you're suggesting that we around this table do the staff thing and say, hey, we need a report. And when it comes next time, the public will get exactly as much notice of that report as they get of all the reports initiated by staff. So I don't think the public is being deprived of any notice. I think that they're getting exactly what they normally get, it's just that, you know, it's coming from council rather than staff.
Thank you.
In addition, I would like to say that I would like the upgrading of the sound system to occur as fast as possible because I'm getting old and I'm getting handicapped and I can't hear properly and hearing aids only go so far. And this sound system, the way it works to provide sound to this table is it emphasizes the bass, which my ears deal with quite fine, thank you. As we get older, we lose the treble and it's not surprising that.
Thank, thank you. Counselor Day?
Thank you. So I, I don't think it matters what we discuss, it's supposed to be on the agenda that we're going to discuss it, whether that's from staff or from council, that's, that's the procedure. And, and then we have a chance to, you know, this is completely out of the blue. I'm here thinking on my feet, talking about, because if you'd asked me, I, you know, I have, I completely agree, we need to do something about the sound system and, and the cameras are not really producing something that I think is terribly valuable. But on, on the feedback side of things, I find this very difficult. I'm trying to look through Michael right now to see staff who are sitting over there. I, I think that we all should, should be able to be seen, but as far as which configuration works better, to me, whether we sit, you know, more towards each other or more out to the audience is not nearly as important as being able to be heard, being able to be seen by the people who are not able to get here and want to watch the podcast. And, and having the items clearly identified on our agenda before we talk about them so we can be prepared for what we're going to say. As much as we can hear from the public in terms of what they'd like to tell us, we should consider.
Thank you. I'll go to our director of corporate service.
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to point out that our procedures bylaw does respect that items need to be on the agenda and they'll be considered in the order that they're presented unless council chooses otherwise. But it does provide that an additional item can be added to the agenda if a two-thirds majority vote of council is in agreement that the item can be added.
Counselor Baxter?
Given where Counselor Day has taken the discussion, I think that's the discussion we need to have. And I think that's particularly a discussion that the council, the public would be very interested in having. So if, if that's going to result from this report, then I'm, I'm in favor of postponing this till the next meeting to have that particular discussion as part of it.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Question on what?
We, I asked, we, we made the motion already. Did we make a motion?
We did.
Yes.
Counselor Baxter just made another one.
Did you make another motion?
Well, I guess I made a, I made a motion to defer.
Oh, to defer this one? Okay. All right. So sorry, there's a motion to defer, Selena, you're looking at me.
I was just going to make a suggestion that might facilitate what council is asking for, and that is that you request the staff bring back a report providing options to continue with the current configuration and the costs associated with that and the upgrade of the equipment, et cetera, versus to revert to the old configuration, but also include the cost to upgrade the audio, video, audiovisual and other equipment as needed. And that could then generate that conversation at the committee of the whole meeting.
Sounds good to me.
All right. Well, we have a motion to defer right now, so I'm going to call that question. All those motion, those in favor of deferring the motion? Those opposed? Counselor Kobayashi, or excuse me, Counselor Baxter, Martin, Jensen, and Logan opposed. So brings us back to the main motion.
So if, if I may, just a point of order?
You may.
You do need to have it on the agenda in order to be discussing it. And in order to have it on the agenda, you need two-thirds majority to put it on because it isn't on the agenda.
All right. So what, I'm looking to staff.
Your worship, a motion would be in order to ask council if they're willing to entertain having a discussion on the council configuration matter.
Move that to the agenda?
So, sorry, you moved it?
Yes.
Okay. Moved by Counselor Baxter, seconded by Counselor Logan. Discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Counselor Day opposed. So now where am I?
You guys confuse the heck out of me. Those are the rules, why don't you follow them?
It's, we did follow them.
We did.
We just voted on it. You just told us.
No, you talked about it first, then you voted on it. That's not following your procedure bylaw.
Well, we're back on procedure bylaw now.
Uh, no, we're not back on procedure bylaw, we're back on eight point one three, which was, I had, I had, sorry, we already have a mover for that, correct? On, the council chambers were reconfigured at the beginning of the council term and we have a mover and a second for that. All right, we have a mover and a second already. That's why I'm clarifying. Yes, Counselor Kobayashi, do you have the discussion?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, I should have stopped because I thought we just voted on a motion to add, add some, right?
Add this discussion.
Okay. So now the previous motions that we made are invalid, correct?
There was no vote on the previous motions?
Do I, do, Counselor Kobayashi is saying, do we need to have the motion again?
I think that would be helpful, yes.
All right. So let's do, let's do that motion again. All right. So the motion, and we can vote on, so the motion that, that's been brought is that staff be directed to report on the options and costs associated with updating the council chamber. Updating may include furnishing, furnish, furniture, excuse me, updating the sound system, high-definition camera for webcasting, and updating the electrical to be included in the 2019 budget. Do I have a mover? Thank you. Moved by Counselor Jensen. Do I have a second or?
Second.
Second by Counselor Day, or excuse me, Baxter. Discussion? Counselor Day?
So I gather from the motion that you've, through that motion, there is a decision that is implied, which is that we're sticking with this configuration?
Uh, no. The, the motion says that there will be a report on the options and costs associated with updating the council chambers. Updating may include furniture, updating the sound system, high-definition cameras for webcasting, and updating the electrical to be included in the 2019 budget.
Okay.
So this is basically asking for a staff report to come back so that council can look at it and make a decision.
Yeah. So, and I don't think that staff have enough feedback from council in terms of what works or doesn't work here to do that report. So I, I think that you're wasting our resources in doing this without adequate consultation.
Do you have something? Counselor Baxter?
Since Counselor Day hasn't made a motion that would correct the situation, I'm, I'm trying to come up with a motion that will correct the situation and I hope it works. So I move an amendment that we add to the motion on the floor that the report also discuss returning to the original format, the costs of doing that, et cetera. Because then that gives a forum for full discussion of, are we staying with this configuration? then that gives a forum for full discussion of, are we staying with this configuration or returning to the old one, or adjusting this one slightly? Um, I, I'm, I'm assuming that what's concerning Counselor Day is that that discussion would, would be missing otherwise.
Okay, um, so can you clarify your, your motion, so that I can get a second or?
That we move, to add to the resolution, um, options, uh, and costs for returning to the original, um, format.
Okay, uh, do I have a second or?
I'll second.
Thank you, second. So, there's a, we, I, we are at discussion for the amendment. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Okay, carries. Go back to the original motion. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Uh, eight point one four, uh, Director of Finance, late grant, grants and aid applications. Staff are looking for council direction on late grant aid applications. Uh, the two thousand nineteen grant and aid applications were to be submitted by November fifteenth, two thousand eighteen. A late grant application was received on February twentieth, two thousand nineteen. In previous years, council has considered late applications, um, period. If there is a remarking, grant, if there's a remaining grant in aid budget, oh, excuse me, uh, we've considered it if there was a remaining grant in aid budget. The two thousand nineteen budget has been allocated and has to be increased to accommodate the approved two thousand nineteen grant in aid.
I'll move, move the recommendation, I'll second then, go ahead.
All right, thank you. Uh, moved by Counselor Baxter, seconded by Counselor Jensen. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. We are in bylaws. Uh, we are only doing, so bylaw, uh, number seventeen fifty-seven, we are only doing first and second.
Move interd- second.
Moved by Counselor Day, seconded by Counselor Logan? You got it? Okay. Uh, all those in favor? Opposed?
Move second.
Second.
Mercy, do you need me to say them?
No, I got it.
You got names? Okay. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Uh, nine point two, bylaw number seventeen fifty-eight.
Move first.
Uh, I'm Kobay, Kobayashi.
Second.
And, and Baxter. Uh, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move second.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed?
Move third.
No, we're not doing third, sorry. It's right.
This is the MTI, we are supposed to do third.
It says, says they're reading right there, MTI.
Well done, Counselor Jensen, second.
Okay, uh, hold on.
Oh, no.
Uh, just for clarification, uh, your worship, when you were on item eight point four, the suggestion was to only give first and second reading to those two bylaws?
So, yeah, just as a clarification to council, this is about the plastic bag, uh, and that we were waiting, we were gonna...
Yeah, we're doing first and second on that one, but we're on the next one, we're on nine point two, the MTI.
Yeah, and that's, that's a companion bylaw to the plastic bag bylaw.
Attached, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
All right, so it is only one.
Yeah.
All right, uh, bylaw number, we're on nine point three, unless anybody, uh, nine point three, seventeen fifty-three, first and second only, road closure.
Of introduction.
Thank you. I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move second.
Second, second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. And that is it.
Move adjournment?
Uh, nope.
Nope.
Uh, in camera.
Oh.
Uh, regular medium in camera was held at six P.M., February twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. All business was dealt with at that time, and we have two motions, um, to release. Uh, let me just find them. Uh, the, the first is, uh, that Chris Pease be appointed to the City of Colwood Intern, uh, Chief Administrative Officer, and the second, uh, release is that two-three-three-zero Suk Road closure of sale of city right-of-way, uh, that the city authorize the Chief Administration of Officer to proceed with a purchase and sale agreement, and to offer the closed right-of-way to Beacon Carmena Developments at a valuation of seventy thousand dollars, that the closed right-of-way be consolidated with the adjacent properties at two-three-three-zero-two-three-four-four B Suk Road, and that the applicant provide a five thousand dollar security, uh, to cover legal expenses related to the disposition of the right-of-way. Gordy, now it's you.
Who, your?
Thank you. Uh, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried.